Let's go. You explain to me after we go. Are we ready, Dwayne? Okay. We're gonna wanna call the meeting to order the agenda for the September 20th, 2021, five o'clock meeting for the Board of Supervisors of Madison County. We're gonna start the meeting off with a prayer. We're gonna have that led by Supervisor Gerald Steen. We're gonna ask that Will Sly, Mr. Sly, lead us in the pledge. Everybody else stand. Put your phones on silent, please. I forgot to do mine. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father Lord, as we come to you this afternoon, Lord, we just first of all, thank you for who you are and what you always have done in our lives, Lord. And Father, we just give you the praise and glory, Lord, for everything that you do and things you take for granted. Lord, as we hold this meeting tonight, Lord, we just ask the decisions that are made would always be good in your favor, Lord. We just pray for our employees, Lord, as they continue to do county business. And Father, we just ask that you give us knowledge and wisdom, Lord, as we make decisions, Lord, for this county. We just thank you and we love you, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Beginning of the meeting here, I think we have minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, should have before you. The September 7th and the September 9th, 2021 board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, please approve said minutes.
There a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all. We have, I believe, Dave Van, Executive Director of Region Eight Mental Health Services is here. How you doing, Dave?
Hey, Dave.
I'm right here.
Thank you, Mr. President. And fellow Board of Supervisors, thank you for letting me come before you. By statute, I have to come before you once a year. I enjoy coming before you, so I don't come just because I have to. But thank you so much for all that you do for us. And, Mr. President, if I could, could I approach and give everyone this annual report?
Yes, please.
Okay. There you go. So this is our annual report. It summarizes services that we provide region-wide. Got about 17,000 active patients today in a five-county area. And around 4,000 of those individuals are here in Madison County. Around 40 to 45 employees here on this campus. And expenses would be around five to five and a half million dollars. And we haven't asked for any increase in allocations in my 24 years. And I'm not asking you for any allocation, any additional allocations today. But we appreciate what you do for us. What you do give us allows us to serve everybody regardless of their ability to pay and respond to emergencies 24 hours a day. And we're very thankful and grateful for that allocation and for your support of Region Eight. And I hope you know that we are available 24 hours a day. And, Mr. President, fellow Board of Supervisors, I'd like to say thank you also to your staff here in Madison County publicly, the chair and Mr. Espy and running law, Chancellor Clerk, who we have worked with an awful lot with involuntary commitments, and Ms. Cynthia. So we work very well with everybody. And it's not like that everywhere, but thank you so much for your support. Thank you for all that you do for us. And I hope we meet your expectations. And if you have any questions of me, just throw it at me.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or any comments?
I got one question. Dave, how do y'all work last year in the schools? And how y'all working this year in the schools?
Great question. We have our presence in every school and every school system and every school throughout the whole region, as long as they allow us to come in. Last year, we were able to get approved by the federal government to provide telehealth and telemedicine. There's still some barriers there. If you've tried to get someone who is not functioning very well or in a crisis that has multiple issues, severe diagnosis, or seriously mentally ill individual, it's very difficult to get them to be able to hold their attention for 15 minutes, much less an hour. And of course, technology is difficult for them to navigate through. And if we've got to send someone to their home to help them navigate that technology, it defeats the purpose of being able to provide telehealth and telemedicine because of COVID. So there are a lot of barriers, especially with our day programs. We've remained open and essential all the way through the pandemic. We continue to be open and operating at full capacity today. We have our inpatient psychiatric facility down in Lincoln County and inpatient alcohol and drug facilities. And we've operated at full capacity with those programs also, all the way through the pandemic.
Good. Okay. That was good. Okay.
Work alongside Region Eight. They do an excellent job. Land is brought, Dr. Kaufman back there, and ten people, they're all taking care of those in need in Madison County. COVID, it just seems people are more fragile than ever, and they have stepped up and taken care of the hands, and they deserve our gratitude, and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for the kind words.
Where'd you mention Dr. Kaufman back there? He's our newest board member.
Correct.
Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your experiences, Dr. Kaufman? Since you've been on the show the shortest amount of time.
One board meeting I wasn't invited to on the 20th of July, and the August one was canceled out of hurricane, I believe, but I'm looking forward to one a week from today.
We got our last board meeting.
Then I'll be able to answer your questions.
The last Monday of the month, of this month. We're required to meet once a quarter, and he was not on board. We didn't have notification of his appointment for the first meeting. And then last month, we had the hurricane coming in, and it was supposed to be that particular day, and so we canceled and postponed it. We meet once a month, even though we're required to meet once a quarter.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, we've received the report. Can we get a motion?
Motion to the knowledge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, fellow Board of Supervisors. Thank you all for your support.
Okay. Shelton, I believe we have a...
Mr. President, Larson Carroll is next on the agenda.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Carroll.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How y'all doing? My name is Larson Carroll, and I stay 146 Tyson Road, Canton, Mississippi. And I'm having a problem with my driveway that when the garbage man runs every Thursday, I sit at the end of the road, Tyson Road. And every time the garbage man comes runs on Thursday, he comes and turn around in my driveway. At first, it was a small truck.
Miss Carroll, push that mic up there a little. Talk into it. There you go.
Okay. Did you hear me now?
Yes.
At first, it was a small garbage truck. Now they got a great big one coming down there, and it just done tore up my driveway and the end of Tyson Road. And I'm here to see what can I get done about it?
Okay.
Rowman can talk, but I happened to go down there today too, but I let him respond. Mr. Kenee?
Good afternoon, board. I looked at it today where they got where they turn around by the heavy truck at the edge of it, just making a sinkhole, just nice pond and water. So I looked at it, and so I know what I need to do to it. So I'm just gonna get it smooth back out, put some clay ground on and put some rocks on, so that'll take care of the problem.
Do that one that go straight into.
Yes, sir.
Look at it, it got a swag in it. Do the one to the right and the one in straight in it.
Okay.
We don't have to get on private property to do it, do we? At least if my driveway, if we did, I mean, I believe we...
I guess they're on my roadway, dude.
Okay, then. We're gonna fix it for you. All right.
Yeah, good, Carroll.
Mr. President, next is Linda Brown, and she's the only person who signed up today.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. President, thank you for allowing us to be here. And I have some handouts to give you each one. If I may. Pardon? Address? Our water system address is PO Box 674, Canton, Mississippi.
Are you saying Canton or Camden?
It's Cameron Water System, but we have a Canton PO box.
I got it.
And for the ones that don't know, Cameron is...
Thank you.
Past Camden.
North?
North.
Okay.
North Madison County between Camden and Highway 51. To whom it may concern, on behalf of the Cameron Community Water System, we're requesting for the county to pay for the proposed replacement of our water lines on Simpson Road due to the county bridge replacement. Our water system is a very small rural community water system of 175 families. And with many of those being low-income families, over the last couple of years, due to old water lines of some 50-plus years, we've had a lot of water breaks due to the tree roots and the right-of-ways with the true reets, true reet, tree roots, excuse me, breaking the lines. All but about 12 miles of those system is in Madison County roads. We've just recently had to go up on our water rates to be able to meet our operational expenses due to some of those repairs. We would much appreciate it if the county would help in the cost of this project, as we would be in a bind without the county's help with the Simpson Road Bridge Project. Please see the proposed plan by Mr. Claude Waynestein, who does our major water repairs. I've spoken with Mr. Griffin, and I've spoken with Tim Bryant, and I've also spoken with Brian Robbins with Stan Tex. We would much appreciate the help of getting this, the water lines moved so that y'all can go ahead and move with your bridge project. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
To you. The, I guess this request is coming because we have asked them to move their water lines so we can repair a bridge? Is that the problem?
Yes, sir. We have a state aid project to replace the bridge on Simpson Road. And as part of that, this water line is in the way of the new bridge that's gonna be put in, and we've requested it to be moved.
Okay. So we're looking, she's requesting $7,250 to remove the...
Yes, sir. The work in that.
Okay.
And this water line needs to be removed before the project of the bridge moves forward, then?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. The, I don't know. Firstly, I want to ask the attorney. The Cameron Community Water Association Incorporated is a private entity. Can we legally?
But as I understand it, we are. We need to do this because of a county project.
Right.
So in a sense, we are. We need to use county resources to fulfill a county project which involves a private water association. So I think we have justification to do it. Also, under the American Rescue Plan...
Yeah.
They would be eligible even as a private water association. We want to use ARP money to do it. You could do that.
Okay.
So either way, you can do it.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Tim, one other question, Tim. Have we done this before with any other water association?
We have not since I've been here.
Well, I'm on. It's in my area. I can't let them down. I'm gonna make a motion authorized to pay it, to help them with it. See where they going.
Yeah. They, because, I mean, 117 people, that's not a lot of ratepayers, so they don't have the money to, just because we want to make a change on a bridge.
I'm on second motion, this for further discussion.
Go ahead.
From what I understand, is that this is something we're asking y'all to do, or we're asking to be done.
Correct.
And for this bridge project to move forward, this line must be moved.
Correct.
Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, it is.
So this is really no different than any other projects that we look at when we ask someone, you know, to, that we're gonna have to remove something from your property, whether it's a fence or something else, that we actually go in and, you know, and pay for the cost. Am I looking at that right?
That's correct. If it's on a private easement, as I understand it, this is on current county right-of-way, and it is in the way of something that we're wanting to do on our right-of-way. In normal projects, we do not pay for utilities to relocate their lines. That's a chance they take, if you will, by locating their facilities on county right-of-way.
Okay. So that's where the catch is, then?
Right. That's the catch. It's on public right-of-way now. If it was on private easement, then we wouldn't even be standing here.
Mike, where does that come in? As far as the county just paid for it legally, as Supervisor Banks mentioned earlier?
I don't, I don't think it changes my opinion. It's on, it's on public right-of-way. And it's necessary for us to move the bridge to do it, so I don't have any difference that a minute ago.
Let me ask you this, Mike. With them being financially strapped and being so small of an organization, would a hardship come in there that makes us capable of helping them?
Of all the things we've talked about, that is the least valuable consideration. Whether they're large, whether they're small, they're still community and private. To me, the real issue is that it's, the reason we're doing it is because it's a county bridge project, and it's on public right-of-way. So I mean, so in fact, we are, it's not like we are damaging them by undertaking the project, but it's more that we are, we're moving them because we have to move forward. So not, you know, for the reasons you mentioned hardship and a small community, to me, that would be more than ARP issue, American Resource, American Recovery Plan money. We can use ARP money for, for our water sewer and broadband. We know that. So if you want to use ARP money, that's no issue at all. Whether they're large, small, medium, we can do that if you want to do it. But here, as Tim explained it, we are, in your discretion, doing it because we are trying to fulfill a bridge project, county project. So I don't see that there's any issue.
And my motion is really not to use ARP money. It was Tim or Shelton to find that money if it passed somewhere in our budget.
Let me ask this also, when you, when that line, if that line is moved on behalf of the county, where is it gonna be moved to? Still on county property, or is it gonna be moved on private property?
It will be relocated onto new right-of-way that we've purchased.
So it'll still be on county?
It'll still be on county property, yes. But it'll just be, we had to buy more right-of-way to do the bridge, so we're moving the water line that was under the existing right-of-way out farther away from the bridge.
We easily could come back five years from now and have another situation, it being on county property.
Theoretically, yes, sir. We could. But we've got utilities all over the place in the county on county right-of-way.
I understand that, but we in this situation today.
True.
I mean, you know.
We just found to get a project moved forward.
Yeah. Is most of that water line on private property, or is it on county easement?
The part that impacts us is on county right-of-way. I'm not sure where it moves on down. I think it stays on county right-of-way.
I think I hear the attorney say that legally we could do that just because we're asking, I mean, because we're actually asking for them to remove it so we could actually pay for it.
I have no issue with it. Makes my job easier.
And it's not anything that they have done. They talking about the water association.
No.
So, okay.
Okay. You heard the motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, as have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and the board. On behalf of Cameron Community Water System, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
All right. We have public hearing.
And the Honorable Norman Kennedy should be coming in. The Honorable Norman Kennedy should be coming in here, Mr. President. He's here.
Three different public hearings. One, this was the notice to increase assessments. Can we get a motion to go into? Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in a public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have eight items for real property increases for 2020 and one for tax year 2019. We have received four of the eight for 2020. The property owners or representative have, they've come in and signed off on the notice of increase. So, I can see here. Mary Halsabash, Clifford McMichael, Susan Laney, and Jeffrey Putman, they have signed off, or someone has signed off on the notice of increase document. So we have Howard Keers, Rebecca Ezel, Ken and Patrice Turner, and Justin Hillhouse. If some, anyone's here to speak on this, I ask that they come before the board at this time to do so. And if not, I ask that you close the public hearing and approve these increases.
Motion closed.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
What about the Liberty?
We have a...
You need approval, Mr. President?
A motion to approve?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thought we did all that in one motion.
About the Liberty and the Russell.
Yeah, I did. Ronnie wants two motions. He likes, he likes minutes. Okay. We got a, what's the number five, Libertia Road abandonment?
I love it, man.
Yeah, that was, that's a little short.
Okay.
Area of space. I think we gotta go into a public hearing, though. So motion to go into public hearing about Libertia Road. Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Liberty Road is a road that runs off of Catlet, right there in the curve, just north, in between Stribling and Stribling Extension. Yet currently runs back to one property in the back. Since then, a development, Autumn Crest subdivision, has come in, and they have requested to move Liberty over roughly 50 feet and call it...
What we call?
Autumn Crest Drive. So no access is lost by anybody. The gentleman in the back has accessed off of the new Autumn Crest Drive.
The subdivision to...
The subdivision has requested that that, that, or that road be abandoned and changed to Autumn Crest Drive. And currently, there is no right-of-way associated with it. It was just a county-maintained road.
Right.
Tim, are you all right with this?
I'm good with it.
It needs to be because they already grazed it up.
It's built.
All right, I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
You want to close the hearing first?
Yeah.
I guess.
Probably need to.
Probably should have heard first.
Yeah, I'll make the, I'll second the motion, close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have a motion to abandon. I'll second that motion to abandon Libertia Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Gruesome.
All right. The next item I have is a public hearing for the abandonment of Russom Road.
Motion?
Oh, yeah. Second. Going to the public hearing. All in favor of going to another public hearing? Is this a different public hearing or is it the same public hearing?
I think it's a different one. Well, I mean, I don't...
All in favor of going to the abandonment of public hearing for Ransom Road?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have the public hearing again.
All right. This road is off of Highway 22. Our maps show it in Section 11, one north, or nine north, one east, and, or west. And currently, it runs through Section 11 and 12, so we're asking that the board abandon everything in Section 12 of Russom Road.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we...
Mr. Chairman, to your motion, if you could just add both motions?
Yeah.
That you no longer need this for county purpose.
For county purpose.
Just after we close the public hearing?
Haven't needed it in years.
Well...
Okay.
You can find your way to add it to both motions. That would make it legal suspension.
Okay. The motion would be to abandon the portion of Ransom Road in Section 12 off of Highway 22. There's no need for county purpose for that particular right-of-way or thoroughfare that do there. It's my motion, abandonment.
Would you close the public hearing first?
No.
Close public hearing first, Mr. President.
Along with closing the public hearing at the same time. Okay. We got public hearing closed.
Who voted? Mr. Griffin is seconded, and you vote?
All in favors, aye. Now the abandonment of Ransom Road.
Second.
In Section 22. Because there's no more public need. You can ask the attorney to write my motion if you want to.
Yes, sir.
Second on that.
We will have assistance from the attorney.
All in favor say aye. Okay, we got them closed. Now we go to consent items.
Motion on consent item.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have consented. Okay. Supervisor Gerald Steen, District 3.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a reapportment to Brian Carter to the nursing home.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Ah, okay.
Mr. President, since he's on that subject, I need to reappoint Don Beebe to the nursing home.
Oh, Mr. Beebe, yeah. Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
While we're on appointments, Mr. President, I need to appoint someone to the megasite, and it is Nathan Jordan, 111 Hoy Road.
The what?
Nathan Jordan. He goes by Bo. You probably know him.
Nathan Jordan. To, where we appointing them to?
This is to the, that megasite board.
I haven't megasite board yet.
Well, didn't we, we actually nominated, somebody nominated someone last week?
Yeah. We filled, filled position last week.
But I didn't get, I didn't get a nominee.
You did what? This person live in the, in the district. Fire district.
He lives in my district, District 1.
He wouldn't live in the fire district? Yeah, they have to live in that, in that fire district. Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. Because what we did, we've got the central, Miles got a fire district.
Is that right?
And it's District 4 and 5.
Right.
It's, and so they, everybody had to come from District 4 or 5 to be on the board.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Be residents, because they being taxed.
Oh, got it.
They're the ones being taxed.
Okay.
They live in that fire district.
Okay. Have I missed anything?
Now, I think we on item 32.
I think we on item 32.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, redistricting. I know that, uh, last board meeting, we, um, made a contract with CMPDD to do the redistricting. This is talking about, uh, an attorney to represent, actually, uh, working with CMPDD, which is, uh, Butler Snow, uh, to represent, to make sure that every which way that we redistrict, uh, that we stay within the legal guidelines uh, of the law. And so I would like to, uh, make a motion, and I'm gonna read the motion to, um, and if it gets a second, passes, that's great. Motion is to retain Butler Snow as special counsel to represent the county and redistrict in all affected county election districts as a result of the 2020 census and any related litigation thereto and to direct and supervise CMPDD in preparing maps and related materials. And basically, what this will do is, is making sure we stay within the legal guidelines with them working with CMPDD. Mr. President, that was the motion.
That's the motion.
Yes, sir.
Is that second on that motion?
Yeah, second. I'm sorry.
Okay, now, uh, on, now for discussion, I'd like to say, you know, I understand the motion, except for one thing. I think our attorney is capable of keeping us and Central in, 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 in the middle of the law and, and, and instead of having to out, hire outside counsel. Um, because I think that's really, that'd be a waste of an expenditure, uh, hiring outside counsel to, to look at what's going on with Central and when we have counsel that's looking at, uh, everything that we do legally. So that's, that's my opinion. Uh, I have nothing, nothing, uh, against Butler Snow. Been dealing with Butler Snow and doing business with them for years and years and still, uh, will continue. But I don't want to overkill, uh, with legal expenses. So that, that's my opinion. Anybody else have any opinion before we call the, call the vote? Hell, my, my opinion is basically the same as yours, uh, and I, I know some laws have changed since 2010. Uh, I don't know if Central Mississippi even used attorney, uh, uh. Did we? Ten ye, yeah, did we use attorney 10 years ago? And I don't know, uh, uh, do we need one now? So to go ahead and vote for one right now, I think, uh, we might be adding some overkill in there. I ain't gonna say we don't need one, but I'm not sure yet. So I'm not ready to vote to make that, that expenditure on, on outside lawyer. I might be ready next meeting or two meetings down the line, but not right now. Okay.
Mr. President, I, I clearly understand both of y'all's statements, but I know that, uh, the way that the, um, the world is nowadays, whether it's State of Mississippi or whether it's the US, you know, when you start something of this nature, uh, redistricting, uh, it's always good to have someone that is knowledgeable of the law and, and to keep you in within the guidelines of it, and that's the reason the motion is there and, uh, and I think Tommy, uh, Carter would probably, would be the representative, so.
Yeah.
Mr. President, my motion stands at this point.
Uh, well, the, the, the motion was, uh, made in proper sucker, even though we're still having, uh, discussion.
Yes, sir.
So it's, uh, I, I still think we have an able, uh, uh, legal scholar as an attorney ourselves. Yeah, I don't, I don't know Tommy's, uh, legal qualifications, but I know the man sitting over there to, to your left, I know his qualifications. Okay, but anyway, we're gonna go ahead and call it to a vote. Yeah, all in favor?
What is the motion? What is the motion?
The, the motion is to hire, uh, Butler Snow to, um.
Let me just read it to you again.
Yeah, read it.
It's, it's a, it's a motion to hire Butler Snow as special counsel to represent the county and redistrict in all affected county election districts as a result of the 2020 census and any related litigation thereto and to direct and supervise CMPDD in preparing maps and related materials is, is the motion.
Is, is, is supervise the word that you want?
Supervise. Yes. Basically, they will work with CMPDD to, uh, with the lines, but they also will work with them mainly to make sure that ever how it is redrawn, that we stay within, uh, the legal aspect of the law.
So Thad, when are they gonna start redrawing the lines?
Well, it's actually with us. It's left up to us.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, and, and I'm, I'm assuming that we will.
Kinda sorta, when are we doing it? I mean, do we need to do this today or do we, we need to do that? When, I mean, what's our timeframe?
Well, I think we'll get the, uh, numbers by the end of this month from what I was told, or maybe the middle of next month. And then it's left up to this board to, you know, to start looking at it.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we push this down, uh, the road until we get our numbers in. Then we'll consider, uh, hiring a lawyer. I'll second that motion. Okay, so we go on substitute motion first. The substitute motion is to, um, table the initial motion and request until later, until, um, till we get a little closer to where we, well, till we get our numbers in so we know exactly what we dealing with. And that is the motion that was made. And second, all in favor of?
I got a question from Mike. Do you have any idea when we're gonna get our numbers?
The numbers are coming soon. The numbers have been, the numbers are being given to states and given to counties now. So I don't know when the administrator will get them. I don't know.
Okay.
But I did this, I was a, I was the attorney 10 years ago when the census came in for Claiborne County. And I, I worked with CMPDD back then to, to do it. So the numbers came in and it was, it was done.
Pretty simple. Revisit, uh, when the, when the actual numbers come in.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of substitute motion to table action, uh, and wait until the numbers come in? Show by sign a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, I think ayes have it. We can wait on this one. Thank you. Now, um, business items, I have attorney.
Thad.
Anna.
Good evening. In your second meeting in August, uh, we were authorized to move forward to advertise, uh, for interest rates on a $6 million short term, uh, not to exceed five-year borrowing for the county for various road projects. So we've, uh, had the, uh, appropriate publications and sent out the appropriate feelers, if you will. We have received back, uh, the bids were due back at four o'clock today. We received, I believe, 10 bids, but one was after four o'clock, so it is non-conforming and has been kicked out. But, uh, Mr. Pittman, uh, with Government Consultants, will read through the nine bids that we did receive so that the county can then be in a position to select the lowest, uh, interest rate bid.
All right.
All right, as Thad said, we received, uh, nine bids from, uh, uh, banks, and, and that's an impressive number, by the way. I do this in a lot of counties and cities around the state, and nine bids is a very impressive number. The credit of Madison County is, there's no question about, about, uh, your credit, so, uh, banks want their money with good credit. So I'll just go down the list in no particular order. Bank Plus was at a 139, JP Morgan was a 146, Peoples Bank Biloxi, 194, Regions Bank, 113, Hancock Bank, 113, Trustmark, 118, Capital One Bank, 119, Community Bank, 105, and Bancorp South, 119. And so the apparent, the low bidder is, uh, Community Bank at 105, and that'd be my recommendation to the, to the board.
Can we get a motion on that?
Make a motion for approval?
Is that second?
And that is for Community Bank.
Community Bank.
Community Bank.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Ah, thank you very much.
Yeah, tremendous rate, 1.05 percent. Pretty outstanding.
And I will say that the non-conforming bid came in electronically, so we saw the rate. It was not better than this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank God. Very much. All right. Okay, uh, yeah, so we can get the money.
How you been?
Eva Pittman.
How you been, Steve?
Some birthday coming, you get like that. He, he getting old. Tell him what I said.
How you been? Good, good, good. Look at me. Somebody sign it for you?
Okay, uh, Tim Bryant, county engineer.
Ready?
All right, yeah.
All right, first item I have is the release of maintenance for the Robinson Springs Road overlay state aid project. Request that the?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second item I have is?
Would you, would you repeat that, Mr. President? What we just say?
We're not gonna tell you.
Okay.
It's, it was the release of a, uh, maintenance, uh, contract on the state aid project Robinson Road overlay. And it was, uh, motions and second by some, some of these people.
I got it in the memo.
You get it to me later. Okay, I think she got it.
She made the motion. Okay.
All right, next item I have is?
And the rest of us too. Okay.
Next item I have is final plat, Charleston Place, Part 3. Uh, this is just lots. There is no public infrastructure associated with this final plat.
Okay, I'll make the motion on that.
Okay.
Can I give a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ah.
All right, next item I have is Cedar Point subdivision final plat. This is also a, uh, private development with no public infrastructure.
Can we get a motion on that one?
Motion.
Motion.
Is there second?
Second.
All right.
All right, final item I have is?
Favor, aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Final item I have is on September 17th, we took bids for the Sulfur Springs Park fencing project. The, uh, low bidder appears to be Jeff Coat Fence at 157, 700. Engineering Department recommends awarding the bid to them.
Motion. Is there second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Attorney McGraw, you here for the, uh, abandonment of Ransom? Oh, okay. Hey, you know we knocked out the Ransom Road. Okay, okay. As well as Bishop. Okay, thanks, thanks, thanks. Okay, Scott Weeks.
Mr. President, Board and Board of Supervisors, good afternoon. I got two items, number 38, 12 Oaks Estate, plant ratification, is combining two lots into one, it's off 12 Oaks Trace, Supervisor District 5.
All right, no problem. They putting them together. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, next item, number 39, Charlton Place, Phase 1, plant ratification, subdivide lot 10 into two lots, 5.07 47 acres and 3 acres, it's off Windermere Boulevard, since Supervisor District 4.
I'll move. Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay, uh, Mike, SB Board Attorney.
Two items on the agenda under my name. First, uh, would be the broadband consultant contract. The board will remember that in the meeting, uh, on the 9th, we contracted with Wagner Engineering to offer management services for broadband development of Madison County. So you approve the consultant, the next job was to shelter it and I would to get with the consultant to approve a contract for them at a price. So the administrator I met with Wagner and, uh, last week, and we went over the scope of work for Wagner and the timetable, and they presented us with a contract for 253, 735. And as we looked at the scope of work, we, uh, we pared it back a little bit. We didn't think some of it was necessary. So the new contract that I recommend that you approve is 206, $206,000 with Wagner. And, uh, they say it would take about eight weeks from now, from the time you approve the contract, to come up with a broadband construction project proposal. Whether it's on the poles, in the ground, you know, whatever, what, uh, whether we're gonna own it, whether we're gonna lease it, and just what the business model would be for the county. So, so I recommend that, uh, you approve this contract with Wagner for that amount.
Motion.
206.
Got a motion, is there second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All in favor? Is it eight weeks, Mike? General.
It's, it's eight weeks from the time you approve the contract.
There, you hear that? Better start running. We mark, we marking it down in stone. Anytime?
You did say eight weeks, right? Yes.
Time, anytime soon, it'll be fine. Yeah. Okay, next.
All right, so let's talk about the Main Street Building. Back earlier, uh, in the early meeting this month, there was a proposal to convey the property that we own in the city of Madison to the city of Madison. And it would be for no consideration. And the, the question was asked of me, can we do that? It came from Mr. Griffin. And I didn't know we were gonna do it that day, so I was thinking, and I said, I said, no. But then I qualified it by telling you how it could be done. So I water, so the motion was made, uh, to convey the ownership of the Laden Building to the city of Madison on that, on that day. And then we talked about how it could be done. So the motion that came from Mr. Banks, that it was surplus, meaning of no need to the county. So that was the motion and, uh, and, and the motion prevailed 4 to 1. Okay, so I'm be here before you today because, not to change the outcome at all, but to make sure that what you did is legally sufficient. So what I've done, uh, is, I want you to know what we're doing.
Thank you.
This is the statute that allows you to donate.
Okay, I got it.
So you, so you, you bought disposable property before. You know that in general, this county cannot donate land. When you want to dispose of land, we have to bid it out, we have to get the highest price, and it's gotta be for some consideration. However, there's a way we could do it, which is really what you did, but it wasn't fleshed out in full. Plus, it has to be spread upon the minutes why you did this. And this is to donate, convey property to an entity for no consideration and no bid and no publication. And so if you look at, uh, this is 1973. If you go to subsection 3, that's on the next page. This is what you have to find at your discretion to be able to, to do what you did, but it, 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 uh, it stands against any legal challenge. And I have a resolution that I wrote in the, in, on your agenda, which. And I have a resolution that I wrote in the, in, on your agenda, which but I wanna give you the statute to let you know what you're doing. So, very quickly, subsection three says that you should find and determine by resolution, adopting and spreading your minutes, which is before you today. Number one, that any county-owned property is no longer needed for county purposes and not to be used in operation of the county. Well, that's true, in this case, because that Main Street Building, you got it in nineteen fifty-three, and you haven't used it since then. So, so for sixty-seven years, you haven't used it for county-owned purposes. If you go to B, it says, you will, you will find in your discretion that the sale of the property in the manner otherwise provided by law is not necessary or desirable for the financial welfare of the county. Well, what's the process? The process would be publication, bid, and sale for consideration. And you're saying by this resolution that, uh, it's not desirable and unnecessary for us to do this. And we have to do this because we know that property had an appraisal four years ago for a hundred and five thousand dollars. And we also know that, uh, in the last year, we've had at least, since I've been here, we had at least two individuals who came to this podium to ask you to consider selling it to them, so we know that. I'm not saying it would bring a hundred and five thousand, I really doubt it, building has no bathroom and all of that. But irrespective of that, I think you have to look at this, and you have to, in your discretion, decide that you're going to, uh, convey this property to the city of Madison because the process you would otherwise use to do it is not necessary, and it's not desirable for the financial status of the county. You just heard Butler Snowtay, we have great credit in Madison County. The budget is pretty healthy, and for whatever you would sell it for, you probably don't necessarily need it to operate the county. And then thirdly, and most importantly, that the use of the county property for the purpose for which it is to be sold, conveyed, leased, or, or leased, will promote and foster the development and improvement of the community in which it is located, and the civic, social, educational, cultural, moral, economic, industrial welfare thereof. So, that's a lot. But it's, it basically says you are considering going outside of the normal scope of doing this, this, uh, of doing, selling property, conveying property, because you believe that is gonna further the purpose to, to improve the cultural, the moral aspects of the county, educational and cultural. And we know factually that the Junior Auxiliary of Madison, they're in that building, they've been in that building for years and years and years. Uh, and you know what they do there better than I, I do. But I know JA is a, um, is a nonprofit, public service type of entity, elementary organization. And in my talks with the city of Madison, I've had talks with Mayor, Mary Hawkins and her counsel, they told me that they believe that JA should remain in that building. Uh, and, uh, so what we're doing is conveying for no consideration, in your discretion, that property to the city of Madison. You believe that they will allow, the new owner will allow the JA to remain in that building, whether they lease it off, however they do it, it's gonna be up to them. But you believe that by doing this, you find all three reasons that you're doing it. It's no longer needed for county business. You don't need the money in the sense that, uh, that the process you would normally use, bid it and so forth, is not necessary for you to do this. And you believe that Junior Auxiliary will remain there, you believe, and, uh, and that, uh, that's why you're doing it, that's why you are going around what you would normally do, uh, and conveying this to the city of Madison. So I also know there were some concerns, so I looked up the Attorney General's opinions on this. There's several, but I gave you the best one. And Mr. Chairman, I would ask every day, I'll tell you if he in the minute. So the, so the Attorney General of Mississippi, in two thousand and nineteen, gave an opinion. DeSoto, uh, LaFlore County, there's one from DeSoto, this is from LaFlore, they wanted to donate county property to a charter school. And if you go to the last page, the second page, it talks about, um, an opinion in two thousand and thirteen by Attorney Nowak. He said the determination of what suffices as good and valuable consideration for the conveyance of surplus property under nineteen seventy-three is within the discretionary authority of the board. So you're doing this at your discretion. You have to have some consideration, but what is good and valuable consideration under this AG opinion is up to you. And so, and so, uh, you have found that the property's surplus, meaning it no longer needed for county operation. You have found, uh, that there's sufficient cause not to bid it or to sell it for consideration. And you have found, uh, that, uh, the tenant in there now, the Junior Auxiliary of Madison, is, um, doing good work for the betterment of the county. And that's why I believe you have authority, and legal authority, to convey this building to the city of Madison. And so I have drafted a resolution that tracks all three elements of what I just told you. And if you vote for the resolution, it's gotta be spread on the minutes, uh, and, uh, and I think you'll be okay. So I recommend you that this be done.
Okay. Okay, everybody, I understand the, uh, the information that they've been given to them by the attorney. I was looking at the, uh, resolution myself. Um, I have no problem with it, I fully intend and think that the building should continue to house JA. They may have been doing a great job in there for years and years. That was the, um, the only one, I wanted, I wanted to stick one little thing in. I did wanna have a, of a reverter put, plugged in that says that we, we'll pass the building on to Madison, the city. But if the, for any reason, the building was gonna be sold, it ought to revert back to Madison County. Because, I mean, we, we, like you said, we've already had one appraisal, a couple of offers. And if it's, if the building's gonna be sold and not be used for public use, then it should revert, the owner should revert back to Madison County, and then Madison County can go ahead and sell. All, all, all the funds should come, come, come back here.
Well, of course, as the owner of any, as the owner of the building, you could put conditions on it, you can add a reverter clause for this, that they couldn't sell it to a private entity, and you could do that, that's up to you to decide.
Be my motion alone with, uh, going ahead and, um, and, and moving forward with this resolution, my motion would be adding a reverter clause too.
Sure.
And I, I, I agree, I have no problem with that, Mary's not gonna have a problem with it either, because the Junior Auxiliary does work out of it. So I'll second his motion.
Okay.
Mr. President, I, I just have one statement, I was following you along the way until the last sentence you said, you may, I think you'll be okay. I, when you said that, do you have any doubts? Cause you're doing real good until you got that last sentence. Real good.
That's, that's my Mike S B colloquialism, plain speak.
I'm asking you, is that, was that a mistake on that last statement? Or do you know that this is good? That's very important.
From the very beginning of this discussion, a few months ago, I've been very clear, unmistakably, without equivocation, that the county owned this building. I said it from this roster, I said it at the building, and we own the building.
Well, I'm talking about your last statement.
I have no doubt.
Okay.
Now.
Uh-oh.
No, 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 I mean, last time I spoke, Mr. Griffin said you talking out both sides of your mouth, and so you, I guess you asking, asking me to-
No, no.
Well, I'm doing that again. I'm not doing that. This is America, anybody could find a problem with anything you do. That's, I mean, honestly.
And I, and I understand that.
So, so I'm saying, what we are doing tonight will rebut any legal challenge, I'm certain.
Okay.
I'm certain of that, yes.
Okay, I just didn't, I just didn't, you didn't very well until that last statement.
Oh, I think.
All right.
I'm very comfortable.
So, okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Sign aye, aye, all oppose.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, Supervisors, I'd like to draw your attention to item number forty-two on the agenda. This is a proposal to provide, uh, some communication services, internet and voice service to the Madison County Extension Office. This is a function of Mississippi State University for which you have to provide a local office. Uh, and this is just, uh, communication services for that office.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number forty-three is a change order related to the courthouse grounds project. Um, you may recall that a couple of years ago, we started this project, and the initial bids came in significantly higher than we expected, and we came back and limited to the, limited this project to an inside-the-fence project. Uh, as we are wrapping up this inside-the-fence project, we've figured out that we actually need to put some erosion control mats and some ground cover and such right outside of the fence to protect what we have already put in place. So this is a change order for seventy-five hundred dollars associated with that project. This does not delay the completion date, uh, which is expected to be next week.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Uh, there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We begin, under item number forty-four, we begin what we thought was a cosmetic repair of our building on Cobblestone Drive. As we have opened this building up to replace the cosmetic, uh, pieces, we have found that there is damage that needs more attention. I would ask that you authorize the hiring of J H and H for the contract that's submitted on the agenda for, um, for assistance in developing a plan to repair this building.
Make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, this did not get, uh, put on the agenda, but related to that same project, we need to, uh, rent fencing to go around the building and block certain areas from public access. And I have a proposal from Mississippi Tent for a total of, I'm sorry, I should have already had this page, uh, pulled open. We have a, uh, proposal from Mississippi Tent for three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to put security and safety fencing around that building tomorrow morning.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, Tim, Tim, could, I see these fellows sitting out here, could you bring up what they need to accomplish and get the, roll them out of here?
I meant to do it when I was up here earlier, I was gonna do it during the whole business.
Well, you can do it now.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I was asked to look at a traffic impact study for that retail development that's going in on the southwest corner of Church and Calhoun Station, next to the existing gas station that's being built. Uh, we've had several discussions and several meetings with the owner and the architect, and we have moved that driveway that is on Calhoun Station south to where it's outside of the turn lane, or the merge lane. And so, there's gonna be two driveways in there. Were relayed in that, uh, traffic impact study as well. So if those two items are, are met, I have no issue with the development.
Motion. Is there a second? I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item I have for your consideration and approval would be number forty-five, the budget amendments and the interfund cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval.
And a second was made by all in favor.
Aye.
The next items, forty-six through forty-eight, is the approval of the general claim docket and two payroll dockets.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number forty-nine is for the approval of the planning and zoning commission there per diem.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item, number fifty, is the approval of the fleet core claim docket.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chancellor Clerk, what did I?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Uh, Sheriff Randy Tucker, oh, there he is.
So small, I'm easy to miss. Uh, I've given the clerk the inmate meal count for the month of August twenty-twenty-one. If I could just get the board to acknowledge that as part of your minutes.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, I've also given the clerk a copy of our medical services agreement that expires, our current one expires on September the thirtieth. We're very pleased with our current provider, we're, we're not asking, uh, for any, uh, other service. We, we would like to keep our current vendor, I have a contract amendment, uh, that reflects their, uh, three percent increase. I'm not asking for any, it's a, it's a budgeted amount. They, they, we've been able to keep the cost down, so, uh, that, they're, even with their increase, it falls in what we've budgeted. So, I'll just ask that the board approve that contract amendment.
Can we get a motion on that?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I know it, I heard it.
I, I second it.
Yes, sir.
And Mike has reviewed that, but we're not in here.
I just let my counterpart of him here talk for me that time. Okay, is there any old business? Any new business?
Mr. President, I don't know if you wanna go into executive session. You may recall at the last meeting, uh, I brought in a candidate for Buildings and Grounds Director, and I've heard some discussion that you might want to interview all of the candidates instead of that particular one. So I need some direction, if you wanna set up interviews, I need to start scheduling that.
I think some, is, is, are we looking at all or just the top three, or what are we looking at?
How many, how many, how many was it? I think top three.
Okay.
Then who, let Shelton, well, we already talked to him.
He had already graded them, so this-
I mean, they actually gonna be working for Shelton.
Yeah.
I mean, we just hire, I mean, we have to approve the-
We gotta approve the hiring.
We have to approve the hiring, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, Shelton could interview and, and bring his selection to us, and we vote on it. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned now.
I think, I think that happened already.
Uh, yes, sir, that has happened.
Yeah, I think it happened.
So, do you wanna set up the interviews for after the nine-thirty meeting?
I was just talking about you set up the interview and, and, uh, and you just bring the recommendation to the board, if you hadn't already.
I think, you know, I do.
I mean, have you interviewed the top three or the top four?
I've interviewed all five.
You've interviewed all five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He brought to the board the person that was most impressive to him.
I mean, they gonna be working, working under your leadership.
Okay, well, I had indication that y'all wanted, that some of you wanted to see, meet all five. So, uh, if not, I'll work out a plan to bring this, uh, bring a, uh, another recommendation to you at the next meeting. Because I have not talked to this person about salary.
Yeah, that, that, that means a lot.
That can make a whole, that can make a heap of difference.
That's, I wasn't, I wasn't preaching.
They have somebody else.
That's right, we might, we might.
We may wanna start interviewing all five.
Exactly.
But I already know that one's priced himself out of the market, so.
Oh, okay, well, all for this.
Okay, we'll bring you, bring you something back next meeting then.
That'll work, okay, if there, there's no other business for this particular meeting, like a motion to adjourn.
Till September thirtieth.
Till September thirtieth.
Final business meeting of the year, and I think, I think it has nine AM on your agenda, but would you, would you prefer another time on nine-thirty?
Nine?
Okay.
What'd you say, nine or nine-thirty?
Nine.
Nine is fine.
On nine-thirty.
Nine.
Keep it at nine.
Nine on September thirtieth.
Oh, yeah, nine on September thirtieth, now you got it, okay. I like, uh, if, could we get a motion to adjourn before, before my birthday? I like, uh, if, could we get a motion to adjourn before, before my birthday? Which is, which is in...
Vice Griffin made the motion, Mr. President.
Six hours.
Vice Griffin made the motion.
I'll second the motion, all in favor? You are standing adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Yeah, yeah, I got a birthday in five hours and 45 minutes.